Well as not to touch their face and why they should be washing their hands frequently.
And I guess that that I guess the issue is that that limit that ability to limit distancing or control the distancing is not is not available on a bus?
That's correct.
Okay.
What about like um for middle and high school during the class changes and arrival in the mornings and departure in the afternoon and in the past they've been grouped together in the gym or something like that? How will that be restructured? Do we know that?
We're working with our school leaders. Some of some of the answers to those questions is going to be dependent on the specific layout of the buildings. But things that we're discussing is separating those students and having them report to different locations. Rather than all going to one same location, we're also having discussions about how how early we can have them report directly to their classroom, even though class hasn't officially started yet.
Dallas?
Yes, sir.
One other question. The what do you can you talk just a second about the the thoughts on how the classrooms will be reconfigured?
I'm actually going to ask Mr. Tools going to cover that in his presence. If you don't mind, I'll
Okay, that'll be fine.
As long as there's no more questions.
Any others? Okay, thank you, Dallas. Appreciate it. Mr. To?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Odom. Good evening, everyone. Just hit on a few points real quick as Dallas was talking about the procurement of the supplies for mitigation. We have a as a school system, we've went out and and procured masks. You heard him state one for every faculty and staff as well as students. And that is in addition to what the Department of Education will give us for the students as well. We've procured over 10,000 masks. We've also procured sanitizer and dispensers. We'll have a dispenser in every classroom in Oconee County Schools to include the common areas and places such as the cafeteria. Another point to mention is the disinfectant that we're using. And we've procured enough disinfectant to electrostatically spray our entire system to include our school bus. Maintain a safe and and disinfected environment. Mr. Tim, I'm gonna go back and and answer your questions. And I think Amy, you may ask one in there as well about the social distancing and the actual classrooms. Flexible seating will be removed from the classrooms where where feasible and will provide the maximum possible spacing between the students' desks. Our intent is to make certain we have the desk space forward and not be clustered together. We've also went out and procured things such as Plexiglas and hallway markers. Where we can make hallway traffic and limit the congregating in those common areas. So we're going to do our best to make sure there's social distance whenever feasible and put those markers in place such as the cafeteria line and in the front office, you know, in the main lobbies to do the things that we can to to keep our students and our faculty safe as well as our visitors. And and I heard somebody also mentioned the the buses and ma- masks will be required of any student who who rides the bus.
Yeah, I guess what I guess where I was going with the the distinct was the distinction between requiring on the bus and inside the school based on obviously the the tightness of the buses compared to school. I mean, I was assuming that was part of the rationale for that.
Yes, sir, it was. There's no way to to effectively social distance on a bus unless you almost have no one riding.
And there's right today, I guess there's no plan to limit the ability of any student to ride a bus if they choose to ride a bus?
No, sir. Students want to ride a bus, we're going to make sure we get them to the school safe.
Okay.
Are there any questions of of me, board member?
Brock, do you anticipate classes taking turns changing classes to limit the number of people in the hallways?
Ms. Kim, right now, we're looking at all the different options of how to effectively transition within the schools because each school is a little different. So we have to make sure logistically that we move people the right way or an opposite way of someone else. So we're looking at that right now, Ms. Kim.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no other questions.
One one last question, Tom. This may this may be more appropriate to Jason than Brock. Jason, can you talk a minute about your thoughts about how how we best reinforce the need and the benefits associated with wearing the masks in the school?
Absolutely. We know that best practice is to request masks be worn when we cannot socially distance the plan, the calls for that. You see that in terms of the bus riding, we are aware that like many of our colleagues around the nation, we understand you can't socially distance on the bus by proximity. And so we are requesting the masks be worn there. We'll also be talking very encouraging and frequently with our students and parents about why masks are important. I know Anissa and I have spoken about, you know, messaging that and sharing that through various posters and communications. As you heard Dallas say, we'll be pushing out some information as we prepare for school about expectations and encouragement of the mask. We understand that you know, we won't too strongly encourage students to wear masks. And we're, as you heard, we're requiring staff to wear masks when they cannot socially distance. But what we will do is is seek to teach and educate. We're all educators, obviously, and so want to educate the importance of why it's important to wear a mask and at the same time encourage our students to do so. And as as has been asked already, you pointed out some areas that we'll be focusing on where we know in transitional times and different times, we're asking our school leaders to look at their schools. They know their transitions best and develop plans that they believe are most appropriate for the transitions in their schools. And so we will look to limit transitions as best we can and certainly watch the numbers. But we'll be having these conversations about masks and appropriate protocols throughout our schools and all the different opportunities that we have to take the positive step forwards to ensure that we're having in-person school. You'll hear in just a few minutes, the feedback from our survey that was highly engaged from our community and their desire to return in person on August the 5th. And so we know if we're going to do that, then there are certain protocols and steps that we're going to need to take to be able to continue to do that, do that appropriately.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Others? Okay, let's move on to our next one. Who would it be? Dallas? Is that it?
Ask Dr. Buck to come up and speak to.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the continuity of learning plans for 2020, 2021 school year. We have reviewed the Georgia Department of Education and Department of Public Health Guidance as well as results from the Oconee County Schools Digital Learning Survey that was conducted at the end of the COVID-19 school closure to develop these plans. There are links at the top of the document that is before you that take you to the Department of Ed and Public Health Guidance as well as results from the survey. Families will have the option to select an in-person model or distance digital learning model for the upcoming school year. The graphic on page one of this document provides a visual representation of the two options. And page two includes descriptions of the two models. Parents that select option one are choosing for their child to begin the school year with a return to the traditional learning model or in-person instruction just as it was provided prior to the COVID-19 school closure. However, if there is an increase in community spread, a hybrid learning model or distance learning model may be utilized. We will monitor the data and follow state guidelines. Under option one, we have also refined plans in case of a possible system-wide closure and move to distance learning. So we have revised the Oconee County Schools Digital Learning Plan to incorporate lessons learned from our experience in the spring as well as taking into consideration feedback from the survey that was conducted at the end of the school year. As a result of CARES Act funds, which Sarah Anna is going to speak to a little bit more in detail later in the meeting, we are going to be able to provide a personal device for all K-12 students. Every elementary school will will have an external Wi-Fi access point in the parking lot. And each middle and high school will have two external Wi-Fi access points in the parking lot. We have additionally purchased Wi-Fi access points to place on buses that can be parked in areas of the county with limited internet access. Option two is the K-12 distance digital learning model. Parents selecting option two are choosing for their child to not attend school in the traditional way and are instead choosing for their child to learn remotely from home. This option is designed to provide quality instruction in a distance digital format. 14.5% responded to our recent survey that they prefer to begin the school year with distance digital learning. Anissa will be prepared to discuss the survey results in more detail later in the meeting. There are some important aspects of option two distance digital learning that I would like to highlight at this time. Distance digital learning for the 2020, 2021 school year will not be structured like distance learning from this past spring. Attendance will be taken and grades will be issued. Elementary students will commit to nine weeks at a time and middle and high school students will commit to a semester. The expectations and rigor will mirror in-person instruction. Elementary students will be engaged in learning through Accelerate Education. This is a learning platform. This model does require significant assistance from an adult who serves as the student's learning coach. I have provided a link to a video on page three of this document that talks more about this platform, Accelerate Education. For middle and high school students choosing to begin the semester with distance digital learning, the school system is planning to utilize Georgia Virtual School. Georgia Virtual School is a program of the Georgia Department of Education and has over 100 course offerings. Georgia Virtual Georgia Virtual School provides a certified teacher hired by the Georgia Virtual School and the Georgia Department of Education. The school district will remain responsible for the free appropriate public education of students eligible for special education services with an IEP that opt for distance digital learning. Because distance digital learning may affect how special education and related services are provided, the student's IEP team will work to ensure that the student receives services to the most appropriate extent possible. A commitment letter with these two options will be distributed to families tomorrow. And we will be asking them to return them by July 15th so that we can plan for a successful start to the new school year. And at this time, I will pause to answer any questions.
Dr. Buck, I see that those that are interested in doing the distance learning have to commit elementary kids for nine weeks in middle and high for a semester. If a parent who signs up for the in-person learning decides after a few weeks that their child probably needs to enroll in the distance learning, is that is it possible to go from that one from in-person learning to distance learning?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Argo. That's a great question. It it and and my answer is going to be it it depends. And we will work on each, you know, within as an individual basis. The the program with the middle and high school students, Georgia Virtual School, it actually has a schedule, a set schedule of a start and a stop time. So so that that would be difficult. I I think at the elementary level, you know, we would work with families on a a case-by-case basis for that.
I I think my thoughts were, let's say, a family member were to get the virus and obviously they had to quarantine. Would it be possible, you know, then to enroll in the other?
Right, so we we, you know, have been exploring all different kinds of scenarios and and options and based on the you know, the the recommended timeframe for quarantine, it will be in the best interest of, you know, the students to, we believe, to continue their learning that they are receiving if they are doing the in-person. And then the teacher, just as we would do for a student, you know, that is sick or on hospital homebound, we would provide that instruction and the learning materials to the student to continue at home.
Okay. Another question, on the elementary level, will they be having a normal activity such as PE, chorus, and that type of thing?
That's another great question. We we are still looking at the the details of the plan. One thing that that I I would like to to share with you that this platform that that we're looking at, Accelerate Education, also provides a lot of project-based learning, hands-on activities, so so they're not in front of the computer all day. It's not a a fully online program. They do access information there, but then they actually go offline and do create projects and but so we're we're looking and exploring options of how how we can provide other activities to the students at this time, but we're not prepared to share specific details until we have that worked out.
I was also talking about PE and all in in the in-person education plan. Will they be going to what we used to call connection classes?
Yes, ma'am. We we are at this time planning to, you know, have PE. We are going to be working on you know, what what does it look like in some of those connection classes such as chorus and and band and art? So that that's that's something that we're we're working on now and having conversations with our our leaders.
Thank you.
Dr. Buck, I have a question. Obviously, it's I want to commend you and your team and and everybody that's worked so hard to to get these these plans in place. I know it's it's a moving target and and there's going to be a you can't cover every hypothetical, although we've been presented with many. But I think it's a good solid plan at this point. So what my question is almost kind of opposite of of what Ms. Argo asked. If they choose option two and realize that it may be too much for them to be, I'd I'd say more so maybe K through five may not be possible for a parent to be a co- a a coach or whatever the case, and they realize that they just can't do it. You know, do we have a a place where they could switch back or is is that still being considered?
So we we did, you know, kind of separate the the timeframe with the elementary and the being, you know, having younger learners. We did put the nine week in there and, you know, that that is really in in order for us to be able to provide the best, you know, instruction and and you know, planning for the students is what we felt like. But again, we will certainly work with families on an on an individual basis as they enter into either, you know, option one or option two and make sure that we can meet the needs of all of our families and trying to be you know, flexible and and meet the needs of of all of our learners.
Obviously, I understand and I hope all the all the parents and folks understand that you have to for lack of a better term, draw a line somewhere. If not, it would be mass hysteria every day if someone changed their mind for whatever reason, be it legitimate or not. So so just to be clear, if you choose option two, really, it's a nine-week commitment on the lower grade levels. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir, that that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Buck, let me first echo Wayne's point. It's apparent you guys have spent a lot of time looking at a a lot of different scenarios on how to how to best deliver something that without a lot of experience to go by. So I give you a a lot of credit to all of your team for for putting together a good solid way to get started that will obviously, you know, have to be modified and and dealt with as you go along depending on circumstances. My question is, you described a pretty rigorous process for the option two online learning that would that would mirror a typical type of in in in-person instructional content with expectations, testing, attendance and and the like. And I think that's outlined in that. My question is, will that same level of rigor, attendance, testing, expectation, full-day participation also be present if if we have to move to the hybrid model under option one and therefore some students would, you know, students, I guess, would be in class two days a week and at home three days a week. So would those three days then carry that same level of expectation for attendance, participation, full day, Monday through Friday, grading, the whole bit?
Yes, I guess, sir. Great question. And 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 both the the hybrid model under option one and the distance digital learning, if we had a, you know, system-wide closure, the expectations are are going to be the same. The the attendance, the the grading, the the rigor, the the scheduling of instruction. We're we're looking at and making sure that and ensuring that we provide equitable learning experiences, whichever option a family chooses and that that we're providing it at a level of rigor that that we believe is important to our community.
Very good. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions. And again, like the others said, I know that y'all worked very tirelessly this summer and I appreciate all the thought that you have put into the plan. First, just now, I'm assuming that these, you know, using Accelerate Education and Georgia Virtual School entail cost. I was curious about that. And then also I saw at one point that there might be another option besides Georgia Virtual School. So I'm just curious how we came to these two options or how that decision-making process went.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish. We, as far as the the cost associated, we are working on those details, but what is important to note is that we will still earn FTE with these models. So that, you know, is is a, you know, one of the reasons that we chose these models because we will, they will still be our students. We will still be reporting them on FTE. And the the other question, there was another option, Edge Annuity, which we currently utilize in the school system. We use it with our alternative education program. We use it with our summer school program. We use it for some credit recovery as well. However, back to my statement before about, you know, providing rigor and, you know, high-level instruction, Georgia Virtual School, we believe is the best model. And another factor in that decision-making is that, you know, our students with the Georgia Virtual School will be with a certified teacher in that content area. So several factors that that went into place in 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 making that recommendation.
And the only other thing I had was just at both levels, elementary and on up, well, if they choose just a digital learning option only, will they have any in any interaction with their Oconee School teachers and the their actual school they would have been attending? Would there just have any way for them to still have a relationship with them?
Right. So at the elementary level, we we will be looking at, you know, having some support from Oconee County Schools teachers. In addition to that, it it wouldn't necessarily be the teacher that, you know, they were going to be in the class, but we would have a teacher to oversee that work. The Georgia Virtual School requires a the school to have a facilitator. And so there would be someone from the school that would be facilitating that. And then, of course, the the other piece of it is that, you know, we have our our guidance counselors and 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 social workers that will also be, you know, remaining in communication as as needed.
Thank you very much.
Um, one other point, Ms. Parrish, that you that I did not point out as you were asking about the connections to the school. If they do choose the option to distance digital learning, the students can still participate in extracurricular activities.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Dr. Buck.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Uh, we'll see. I guess we're moving to guidelines for employees then?
Yes, sir. Dr. Whitmire?
Yes, thank you. And board members, good evening to you and thank you to my colleagues for their work on what you've already seen. And certainly, board members, as you know, this past June, the first, just over a month ago, a lot of our employees came back to work after a period of time of being in quarantine and isolation. And certainly, we're looking forward to having the vast majority of the rest of our employees, including our teachers, come back here in just a few weeks. It has been a long time coming. We're excited about the start of the new school year. And certainly, we're excited and happy to welcome back and get ready to welcome back our teachers. Board members, the document that you have in front of you is one that will be sent out to all employees later this week. It's something we've been working on for a good bit of time now. Just in an effort to provide some guidelines to employees and to answer some questions that that all of us would have as we get ready to come back to work, I will tell you that the document and what's contained therein all is in alignment with guidance that we received from the Georgia Department of Public Health. So as you look through that, just know that this is a simplified version. Try to make it as simple as possible and as as cogent as possible for our employees as we send it out to them. One of the things you'll notice, just to go through some of the major points, and and Dallas alluded to this earlier. One of the expectations for all employees will be self-monitoring. We're all accountable to each other. And so by virtue of reporting to work, I'm saying, and I'm I'm acknowledging that I don't have COVID or any of the related symptoms. The other thing, of course, that's important is that, and it's really a first priority, this has always been the case, but certainly this is the case now. And that is that if an employee is sick, they are to remain at home. And if they were to get sick during the workday, then the expectation would be that they would go home as quickly as possible. And of course, at every step along the way, what we're asking other employees. Is that they communicate directly with their supervisor with any COVID-related issue. And of course, human resources will be involved every step along the way. One of the things about any medical situation, any health situation, as we deal with those with employees, is that they're all different. It doesn't matter if you had 500 different medical situations, they're different in some way, but of course, we are dealing with those differences. But addressing all of them in alignment with the guidance that you see. And of course, and Mr. Bagley mentioned this a minute ago, you you can't cover every hypothetical. And certainly, we're not trying to do that. We're not trying to what-if this to death. But at the same time, we do want to make sure that employees understand what they would need to do if, for example, they get diagnosed with COVID-19 or if. They come in contact, close contact with an individual who is sick with COVID-19, and we've got guidance in there for them. Board members, you'll notice also in this document that we do address contact tracing. And one of the things that I want you to know is that we've made the decision and taken the position as an organization. That we will conduct our own contact tracing. This is in addition to what the Georgia Department of Public Health states that it does. We want to take that extra measure and do contact tracing ourselves insofar as our own employees are concerned, meaning that if an employee. Uh develops the virus, gets sick, then we certainly will implement contact tracing, following the procedures. Exactly as the Georgia Department of Public Health does, but just doing it within our own organization as another protection for our employees. You'll notice also in the document, board members, that we do outline return-to-work protocol in the event that someone is sick or in the event that they come in contact with someone. That is sick and have to be isolated for a while. We've got that protocol spelled out for employees. And again. Every circumstance has got a little bit of nuance to it, a little bit of difference. And of course, we'll be communicating with employees and their supervisors all along the way as necessary. You'll notice also, board members, at the end of the document, there are two pieces of employee leave that are relatively new over the last number of months. Um, you may recall that right at the beginning of the pandemic, that Congress passed and President Trump signed into law. Uh, the family's first Coronavirus Act. And within that act, there are two provisions involving employee leave, what's known as the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. And then the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act. We've got guidelines in there for employees. Uh, they're very specific. And of course, we're available for any questions along the way, but we just wanted to let employees know upfront because a lot of them have heard about potential leave if they've got a situation related to COVID-19. And we wanted to let them know that upfront with some detail. And then, of course. In every situation, of course, there'll be questions and we'll be available for that as well. That summarizes the document, board members. Again, it'll be going out later this week to all employees. We want to give them plenty of time to digest that, answer some questions that they have. Probably produce some other questions that we'll be prepared to answer as well and working with them and their supervisors as we get ready to kick off the new school year. And that concludes uh this discussion of that document unless there are any questions.
Spare detail, thank you.
Brooke, I have one quick question. Um, I know that you said you'll be sending this out, but now it is a public document since it's part of this meeting. So. Any other parents that have questions about that, they'll be able to see this on on our website. Is that correct?
That is correct. It will be it will be published along with the other documents as Anissa described earlier in the meeting.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hey, thank you, Brooke. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next is Dallas, I believe, is Communication.
That's correct. Ms. Semenes?
Good evening. I did want to note that unfortunately, we're still having problems with audio. I'm getting lots of messages. So I did want to let the public know that we are recording this. Our actual Google Meet. And so we'll be uploading this to YouTube immediately following this meeting, which will have clear audio. But I will go ahead and continue with my report, which is on school reopening communication. First, you can see that there's information posted on oconeschools.org/reopening. This is information that was sent out via email from Dr. Branch on June 30th. And it has information on enhanced safety protocols and learning models, along with our plans that we do plan to return to in-person instruction on Wednesday, August 5th. Along with a distance or digital learning model if students, parents so choose. At that time, we also asked that parents fill out a non-binding survey. This was for us to gauge interest in in-person versus the distance digital learning models. You can also see in the packet that you have in the attachment. That this information is right up front on our website in the main rotator image and is also the first item under School News. And we will continue to update this information at oconeschools.org/reopening, just as we did with the COVID-19 information page. This information was also promoted on social media on June 30th with a graphic. That simply said in-person on August 5th or distance digital learning on August 5th. And also had information with a link to oconeschools.org/survey. So to share the survey questions and then I'll share the results. Again, we said that this survey is to gather input and is not binding. A commitment letter will be sent on July 7th, which is tomorrow, and must be returned by July 15th. If a commitment letter is not submitted, students will be enrolled in the in-person option. So we asked that parents choose at which school that their child would be enrolled, what grades. We again shared here in addition to in the email, just what we were doing to mitigate the spread of infection. Again, precautions in place such as social distancing when feasible, additional sanitation, limited outside visitors, increased hand washing, and encouraged use of masks. And again, we clarified that students who enroll in distance or digital learning will be able to participate in extracurricular activities. We asked parents, did they plan for their children to attend in-person or via distance slash digital learning? They had one child, did we plan for them to attend in the same way? We asked about transportation plans and the after-school program and internet access. And here are the results. We had 3,225 responses to this. So this represented households, and I'll be able to share some data with you. We were able to also see how many students this survey represented. You can see that we had a number of responses from every single school and every single grade level. As Dr. Buck mentioned, 14.5% of parents said that they planned for their children to attend via distance slash digital learning this fall. 85.5% of parents said that they planned for their child to return in person. We also asked, if you have more than one child, do you plan for all of them to attend in the same way? And the vast majority did. We also asked about transportation plans, as I mentioned. 40.6% of parents plan for their child to be a car rider. And then we also asked lots of questions about school bus riders. We said. If, did you ride a school bus last year and plan to do the same this year? That was 36.9%. We asked, did you not plan for your child to need transportation because they will be learning from home? So we asked a lot of questions. We said, did your child ride a bus last year and you don't plan for them to return this year, although you'll be in person? We also asked about the elementary after-school program. And 16.1% of respondents said that they did plan for their child to participate in the elementary after-school program. That being said, 43.2% did not have a child in elementary school, but we'll be able to drill down those responses by school. Also, this was really interesting. Will your children have internet access at home? 98% of parents did report that they do have internet access at home. So again, I mentioned as far as total submissions that we have that number over 3,000. And so that's the first chart that you'll see on this page. We were able to drill it down by level, the number of digital learning submissions by level. And then in the green chart, this is really interesting. You can see the total number of students. And here we're able to determine that out of the 3,200 or so survey responses, that actually, that actually represents 5,337 total students. So this is about 65% of our overall student population, which we did have a statistician take a look at and say that this is a great response. This is absolutely something we can take. That is going to be representative of our community. And you can see that at every grade level, there are students participating in digital learning. Um, it varies, but this is really, really valuable information. And then we also had on the next one, the total number of students enrolled in digital learning. So on the previous one, it was just the total number of submissions. And here we see 733 actual students have had their parents say that they plan to enroll them in digital learning. Now, certainly, since we put out this survey and shared some information, we've had a lot of questions. And so we've been working diligently on a frequently asked questions document. And this will go out tomorrow along with the commitment letter. We've been collecting all the questions that have been asked on social media and via email. And have worked to try to answer these as best we can. And if we don't have the answers, we're letting people know. For example, when it comes to specials, we're meeting with special teachers, we're meeting with the chorus teachers to determine best ways. Um, to hold those type of classes. And so we'll be able to have a lot more information to push out to parents tomorrow along with the commitments letter. As Dr. Branch mentioned, we'll have increased signage in our schools. And so you can see a sample in your packet and. This one will be posted in all of the main lobbies at every school. And it says, by entering our school. You are agreeing that you do not have a temperature over 103 degrees. You have not been in close contact with someone diagnosed with COVID within the last 14 days. And you have not been diagnosed with COVID and should be under a quarantine per Department of Public Health guidelines. And we also have three different um hand washing signs, and principals just selected these based on what they felt was most appropriate at the. Elementary, middle, and high levels. And so we'll have these um signs up in restrooms to encourage and just remind people to wash their hands. So that concludes my overview of school reopening communication. Are there any questions?
I just uh, not not for you, Anissa. Thank you. I know you've done a truckload of work on this and thank you so much. Uh, this was a lot of information, Dr. Branch, and uh. I would say that it's a mammoth job to even look at this, but across the nation. Uh, you know, everybody's kind of in the same circumstance. But I know there's a lot of uncertainty in in our community. Uh, some are fearful. Good bit of anxiousness, I'm sure, because it's your child. And there's the weariness of all the other stuff that's going on in the world today. But what I see here. You've answered most of my questions along the way. And what we have to recognize is that there's no perfect world, but I believe we're giving our best effort. And so for that, I'm grateful and have gratitude for that. So I appreciate all the work and I know there's going to be a. A continuum of this as we work through this. So uh, I'm sure we're going to do our best. And also, I had a question about. You know, in a setting where uh possibly we would have to discontinue school and I said, I heard that. So uh, I think you you'll be monitoring everything and we'll just see how it goes. And uh. You're taking in a lot of the questions of the community and uh, and even uh answering their questions. And it takes a lot of time. I've been there. I've done that. So, thank you. Any other question?
Anissa, I have one comment and and I want to say I appreciate the first um, the first interior signage and and uh. Obviously, I think that needs to uh be emphasized in your FAQ. Um. One of the things that um that I like about is is you're asking, um, we we know this is a team effort with the um school system and the. The um, the parents of these children. Um, and we've always talked about safety being a priority of this board and this school system. So we're asking that the parents cooperate and and commit that their children, um, not only their children, but any other people that visit the school. But primarily the children that go in day in and day out and and have them um. Commit to the fact that they're not sending their kid in with a temperature uh above the 100.3, which I assume that, you know. It's an extra step they might have to take. Um, uh, but it's kind of a uh, uh, extra step that that we feel is is virtually important. And um, it just encourages that participation and cooperation with our um, with all our um stakeholders uh under these trying circumstances. So. I think that's a really important thing of of asking for some personal uh commitment um. From our parents to to make sure that uh not only they're looking at their own child, but but all the children of the school system as well. So thank you for that.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Um, oh, and I want to, I want to, I want to follow up on what Wayne's just, just pointed out because it it struck a chord with me and I. First, I want to say I appreciate the comments that uh, uh, Dr. Branch made about. The perspective that we're going in with on the wearing a mask. I know that's been a contentious issue, but we've heard a lot about it. It's. It's a national debate that's going on uh across the country and in all kinds of ways. But I I appreciate the the perspective that Jason laid out in terms of trying to uh reinforce a positive message. Uh, to the students. And I think Wayne makes a good point that that reinforcement, if that reinforcement of that positive message. Uh, starts at home as well. Um, we have the opportunity to create. A a climate with strong personal uh responsibility and voluntary cooperation and voluntary participation and and. And so many things, it's that voluntary cooperation, that voluntary compliance. That really becomes the backbone of any effective way to to deal with uh a situation. And the the comments he made about uh reinforcing the rationale. Uh, with the students of the safety issues associated with wearing masks, how it not only protects themselves, but it protects their friends. Uh, and it also can contributes to the likelihood that we'll be able to stay in school as opposed to. Uh, to have to convert to some of the alternative models that that Claire described. I think go a long way in explaining maybe the best way to create the the proper environment. Uh, to deal with uh what would otherwise be a a a destructive and contentious issue. Uh, so I I appreciate that and I appreciate how Anissa's kind of taken that same um, same same uh intent. Uh, and created that same intent uh with the other issues like, if you're going to visit our schools, be responsible when you come into our schools. Uh, and if you're in the schools, uh, wash your hands and be responsible about it. So it's it's that it's that theme. That if we all will will successfully engage with that theme, I think it has the potential to go a long way to to effectively. Uh, uh, deal with what could otherwise be uh, uh, a contentious and destructive issue.
Thank you. Unless there are any questions. Uh, that concludes that part of it, I believe. Uh, am I right, Dr. Branch?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to echo the board again. Thank the staff and the many hands that have touched this and as everyone has said, uh, this is our our. Uh, most uh up-to-date plan at this moment. As we get more information. Uh, we'll continue to keep an open dialogue with our community that we've been doing so far. And I think uh. Trying to be responsive to answer any questions, address any concerns, and as the board has said, uh, highlight personal responsibility while at the same time providing encouragement. Uh, for what we think are best practices.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're going to move on now to teaching and learning, our uh, the regular part, the next part of our agenda there. Dr. Buck?
Yes, sir.
There you are, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. The Oconee County July Teaching and Learning Report contains three items of information. And one action item for the July 20th board meeting. The first item of information is the first virtual learning summit in Oconee County Schools that was hosted on June fifth. You can see a picture of a screenshot of the participants uh, that, that participated in, um, this summit. Um, we had over one hundred teachers to participate in this. And I, I, I want to pause and commend Ryan White, Mary Blackburn, Jennifer Adams, and our stellar instructional technology specialists for their hard work in planning this event. Um, this is one example of the many professional learning opportunities on distance and digital learning that Oconee County Schools is providing for our teachers. The summit was recorded so that other teachers can participate in this opportunity. And we are also developing other professional learning for our teachers that will begin when they return. So we're very excited about the continuous improvement, um, in the area of distance and digital learning. The second item of information is online registration. Very pleased to report that, uh, we will be moving away from the traditional paper-based enrollment to Power Schools' online management system. New registration will go live on July thirteenth, doing away with all of the paperwork that has traditionally been required to register a student. I want to commend Ryan White again for working with Power School to expedite this process and to get it operational, um, so that we can expedite registering students. The third item of information is an update on the math standards review and revision timeline. This is on page two of the Teaching and Learning Report. Due to COVID nineteen, at the state level, this revision has been revised and the new standards are ten of, tentatively scheduled to be implemented in the fall of two thousand twenty-two instead of the fall of two thousand twenty-one, which gives us more time for professional learning and to plan on the implementation of the new standards. The action item for the July twenty-second board meeting is the recommendation to approve Board of Education Policy IHF six graduation requirements. This policy was placed on the table for public review and comment at the June Board of Education meeting. As a reminder, the Georgia Department of Education received approval from the United States Department of Education to include an alternate diploma for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. This policy will go into effect for students entering ninth grade in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. And they will be included in the graduation rate calculation. This policy has also been reviewed by the Georgia School Board Association. And that concludes the July Teaching and Learning Report unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Dr. Buck. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next on our agenda is operations. Brock To.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. The Oconee County Schools' Operation Division July Board of Education Report contains two items of information and no action items for the July twentieth Board of Education meeting. First item of information is our energy report and the May energy report shows a trend increase in usage over April. The second information item is our construction update. Um, as far as the Malcolm Bridge Road roundabouts are concerned, we'll continue to maintain communications with Jody Woodall, uh, Oconee County Public Works Director for updates as they occur. And we have also completed our fourth main relocation there at Malcolm Bridge Middle School, uh, due to the roundabout construction. Our North Oconee High School and Oconee County Middle School field lighting, um, installation is going well. Uh, we have completed the retrofit at North Oconee High School. Uh, we have begun testing the lights and there will be a full blown test, uh, in the weeks to come. We'll make sure everybody knows that date. Um, the Oconee County Middle School are in the final stages of the construction. We should also begin testing those lights next week. Uh, that concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions?
Uh, yeah, one question. Brock, would you be willing to come to my house and consult with me on my energy use?
Yes, sir.
Based on the energies you were able to deliver in April and May, looks a lot different than my energy use and I kind of need your help, I think.
Yes, sir. Just let me know when, Mr. Tim.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brock. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Uh, next, Dr. Woodmire, Human Resources.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair Odom. Human Resources has one item of information for you this evening, board members. And it has to do with board policy, actually the regulation attached to board policy GAK. That's our criminal background check policy. And board members, as you know, when we make changes to regulations, that doesn't require any action on your part, but we do certainly want to keep you informed. And what I would tell you is that from time to time, the Georgia Bureau of Investigation will change procedural language attached to these policies and they've done that again. I will tell you that there's no major change to anything that we're doing, but when the GBI makes changes, really the regulation just mirrors a lot of their language. And when they make changes, then we make changes accordingly. And that's what we'll be doing here in this case. And unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Any? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it. And next, Student Services, Dallas LaDuff. You're a busy fellow this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. Uh, the Oconee County Schools' Student Services July Board of Education Report contains three items of information and two action items for the July twentieth Board of Education meeting. The first item of information is high school graduation. We are pleased to announce that we plan to hold our graduation ceremonies later this month and look forward to celebrating with our graduates in person. As a reminder, the dates, uh, and times for those ceremonies will be North Oconee High School's ceremony will take place Friday, July twenty-fourth at seven PM in the stadium. And Oconee County High School's ceremony will take place Saturday, July twenty-fifth at seven PM in their stadium. Um, we have decided, uh, to limit the, uh, guests per graduate to six. So we'll distribute six tickets to each graduate. And that will allow for us to be able to, um, physically distance one party from another party when they come to celebrate uh, with, with their students. We'll also ask that, uh, the students wear masks when they are unable, unable to physically distance. So basically when they do come onto campus and they are not seated at graduation, we will ask that they, uh, wear a mask. We're also encouraging our, our guests to do the same um, when they come onto campus as well. Uh, the graduates will be seated, uh, six feet apart from each other on the football field. And they will cross the stage to receive their diplomas. Um, the second item of information is, um, our high school athletic accomplishments. As a note, you all know that we did not complete our, our spring seasons, but I'd like to take this, uh, opportunity to thank you all for your continued support of our students' athletic activities outside of the school day. Um, there's three documents, uh, in front of you. One of, is, one, one of those documents is a list of team accomplishments earned by each school. Another document is the summary of all state and individual awards by school. And the third document is a list of state and region accomplishments by, by school. Listed on these three documents, uh, you will find that our students earn seven region or area championships, thirteen region or area second place finishes, four region or area third place finishes. And our, our students also earned four individual state championships. Um, again, board members, I, I would just like to say, uh, thank you for your investment in our athletic facilities. Uh, as you all know, one of our strategic goal areas, uh, in our, our strategic improvement plan is culture and climate. And one of the focuses of that goal area is to continue to provide opportunities for students to participate in extracurricular activities. And, uh, as Mr. Tool updated you on the lighting project, just, just wanted to say thank you because when we begin uh, our next athletic season, we will have updated lighting in all of our stadium facilities and, um, it's, it's just wonderful to be able to provide those world-class facilities for our, our students to be able to compete in each and every day. Um, the third item of, of information I have is our, uh, summer feeding program. Uh, we, uh, will be continuing that through the end of, of July, so for the rest of summer. Um, as a reminder, we're delivering to, uh, or we have pickup locations set up at four different neighborhoods, which are Pinewood South, Boulder Crest, Pebblestone and White Oak. Uh, students are receiving uh, breakfast and lunch from Monday through Friday, July sixth and thirteenth. And on July twentieth, they'll receive two weeks worth of, uh, meals. So our school and nutrition staff can, um, can prepare their kitchens for the return of, of students. Uh, did also want to share with you that, uh, to date, since our school closure, we have served well over sixty-six thousand meals uh, to our, our student population. Um, and that's while school is closed. So I wanted to commend our school and nutrition staff uh, for that accomplishment and, and their tremendous work. They're working, uh, really hard at Oconee Middle School there to get that done and distributed, uh, out in the community. Uh, the, the first item of information, uh, or I'm sorry, the first action item for the July twentieth board meeting is our school nutrition program FY twenty-one bids. Um, listed there are the annual school nutrition bids. The school nutrition department is a member of the Georgia Educational Cooperative. The cooperative prepares all requirements of each bid and the bid is then represented to the group for approval. And that's what you have, uh, before you. And finally, the second item of information is our student code of conduct. And the reason you have that before you is we've updated that to reflect changes added by the Department of Education in their discipline matrix. And what they've done is they've added, uh, two discipline codes, uh, one for violence against the teacher and, um, another for electronic smoking device. So we have updated our code of conduct to reflect those changes in the Department of Education, uh, discipline matrix. That concludes the Student Services Report. Unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Dallas?
Dallas.
Yes.
Um, violence against the teacher, that, the, can you explain a little bit about what, what, uh, what the code said? Cause I didn't, I didn't go back and, and, and read it from the very beginning, but I was kind of surprised when I saw that show up. Doesn't seem like that would have been a, a new item. So can you kind of explain to me what, what's new about this? I mean, did we not have a requirement that it was against our code of contact, conduct to have violence against the teacher before?
Yes, sir. And, and it's, it's actually, um, a little bit nuanced. What they've done is they've pulled uh, teacher specifically out and created a separate code specifically for teacher before it was covered under the code for battery. Um, and it just listed as a, a staff member. But what you'll see is they're still asking us to use the code for battery for violence against a staff member who is not a teacher. And then they had that separate code for violence against a teacher.
So is the, with this, with this new change, is the punishment for violence against the teacher potentially stronger than the punishment for, uh, violence against a staff member?
The, the range for the, the discipline, uh, consequences is within the same, uh, realm. But, um, they just wanted to make that, that specification at the, uh, Department of Education level.
Okay. So, but violence against, whether it's violence against a staff member or violence against a teacher, you, there are still, there's still a range of, uh, punishments, including expulsion for both, both sets of employees?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay.
For, uh, for the students.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I see the other one is just staying up with the technology.
Sure.
Okay. Unless there are other questions. Uh, thank you, Dallas. Really appreciate your time this evening.
I had a quick question, if you don't mind. Sorry. Um, twenty twenty graduates, have they already been notified that graduation will take place in, uh, late July?
That's a great, uh, question, Ms. Argers. So the, uh, principals are gonna send out specifics in terms of what to expect and what's forthcoming with that graduation to, um, parents and graduates this evening. And then we'll push that on social media as well. And then there'll be more instructions forthcoming in terms of, um, what time you need to report rehearsals and things like that.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure.
Yeah, I believe that's it this time. Thank you very much. Uh, next on our agenda is Business Services. Sarah Anna Sharping, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Chair Odom, and good evening, board members. Business Services has one item of information and one action item for tonight's meeting. The information item is the Coronavirus Aid Recovery and Economic Security Act, more commonly called the CARES Act funding. Uh, wanted to let you know we received a small amount, three hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, which is the least amount of any county school in the Northeast recent. Uh, the allocations for this funding to the school systems was based on the system's Title I allocation, which is based on free and reduced percentages. And of the three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, nearly fifty thousand dollars is allotted to private schools. Athens Academy will receive nearly thirty-six thousand dollars and Westminster fourteen thousand dollars. So the remaining three hundred thousand we will use in the school nutrition department for meal service and for, uh, technology, uh, purchases. As Dr. Buck, uh, told you before, or just earlier this evening, K through twelve will be one-to-one. We'll have external Wi-Fi access points available in all school parking lots and on buses parked around the county. So that concludes my information item before I move on to the action item. Are there any questions on that?
No. Good.
Okay. So the action item for tonight's meeting is the FY twenty-one tentative budget. And before you is the, um, budget calendar for FY twenty-one. And so tonight we will present and recommend adoption of the tentative budget. And if it's approved on, uh, it will be advertised on July the ninth. And as you know, we're required to have two budget hearings. And so there will be one July the thirteenth, um, at nine AM and this one will be virtual. And then there will be another one July the twentieth, uh, at five o'clock PM and this will be in person, um, in the superintendent's building. So if all of this meets your approval, we'll send this information to the Oconee Enterprise in the morning. And then on July the twentieth, we will have the final review of the budget, adoption of the final budget and the tentative, uh, mileage rate in, in July twentieth. Hopefully we'll have an update on the tax digest then. And if we do, we'll publish it on July the thirtieth and adopt a mileage rate on August the seventeenth. Again, all those dates are tentative dates and will be based on when we receive the updated tax digest information. Uh, any questions on the calendar? Okay. All right. So, uh, now I'd like to take you into, um, the budget presentation. So the total available funds for the FY twenty-one budget is one hundred three point two million dollars. Thirty-nine percent is state revenue of forty point four million dollars and sixty-one percent is local resources or sixty-two point nine million dollars. The local sources consist of local revenue of thirty-nine point four million dollars and a beginning fund balance of twenty-three point four million dollars. So a little bit, uh, more of a detailed look at local revenue, the thirty-nine point four million dollars. It is forty-nine percent of total revenues. Add velourum taxes of thirty-six point three million dollars or ninety-two percent of the local revenue. This is an increase of three point three million dollars over the FY twenty budget. This estimate is based on a seven point nine three percent tax digest growth, which is based on the average growth over the last five years. There's also other local taxes of two and a half million and they make up six percent of local revenue. And these taxes are really of local revenue, and these taxes are real estate transfer, intangible tax, and title ad valorem tax. And then there's six hundred thousand dollars or two percent in other local sources, and this is primarily our Medicaid reimbursement, facility rentals, um, some E-rate reimbursement, and some interest. State revenue of forty point four million dollars is fifty-one percent, um, of revenue. The primary source is Q B E funds of thirty-nine point, um, one million dollars, which is almost ninety-seven percent of the state revenue. The final state budget included a ten percent cut to Q B E funding, which was a four and a half million dollar cut to our state revenue. Uh, we also have state categorical grants of nearly eight hundred ninety thousand dollars or two point two percent of the state funding, and this funding is for our Transportation Department and nurses. We get another three hundred and forty thousand dollars for instructional grants or two point two percent of the state revenue, and this is for our C T A E and ag programs, and then we estimate to receive about seventy-seven thousand dollars toward the purchase of one bus. The next slide, um, you can see the history of the tax digest. The growth has been steady since tax year twenty fourteen, and the F Y twenty-one budget is built on the value of a two point three billion dollars, which is seven point nine three percent increase. Uh, the next slide shows the history of the fund balance. The fund balance has helped us manage all the growth needs of our system, and the healthy fund balance demonstrates the good fiscal responsibility of the board and the superintendent. The F Y twenty-one general fund budget has total expenditures of eighty-three point seven million dollars. Ninety-one percent or almost seventy-six million dollars is personnel costs. This is the salary and benefits of all employees. Uh, another nine percent is for operations, which is seven point seven million dollars. In addition to our continuation budget, we have budgeted for eighteen new positions for growth and system needs. We have two special ed teachers, eleven regular ed teachers, one regular ed paraprofessional, two counselors, and two custodians for a total cost of nearly one point six million dollars. On the next slide, board members, you see, we have one point three million dollars in the F Y twenty-one budget for Board of Commission. Of this, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars will be paid for the collection of taxes, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of costs for the use of our facilities. There's a hundred thousand dollars for the renovation of the HVAC system at the Civic Center, eighty-five, eighty thousand dollars for standard maintenance. This is just everyday operations at the Civic Center, fifty percent for custodial utilities and maintenance. Forty thousand dollars for the, um, sewer line relocation for the roundabout at Malcolm Bridge Middle, and thirty thousand dollars for the Oconee Library, for a total of one point three million dollars. So I mentioned earlier that the F Y twenty-one budget has total expenditures of eighty-three point seven million dollars. Seventy-eight percent of the budget is for the instruction of our students to help them be successful. And we have another twenty-two percent, a small amount, that remains for our support services, transportation of our students, administration of our schools, upkeep of our buildings and grounds, hiring of our employees, our financial reporting, and other support services. So on the next slide, you can see more of a breakdown of the expenditures that are directed for the instruction of the students. Almost seventy-two percent or sixty point one million dollars is for instruction. These are our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our instructional resources. We have another three point two percent or two point seven million dollars for pupil services. These are your, the nurses, our counselors, our social workers, our psychologists. One point three percent or one point one million is for the improvement of instruction. This is our professional and curriculum development, and another one point three or one point one million dollars for educational media, which is our media centers. If you take a look at F Y twenty versus F Y twenty-one expenditures, uh, again, this budget has, um, eighteen positions for growth, one point six million dollars. We have eligible staff increases for employees, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We have a hundred thousand dollars for the renovation of the HVAC at the Civic Center, forty thousand dollars, uh, for the Malcolm Bridge Roundabout, the sewer line relocation. And this year, we did, um, the T R S employer rate did decrease, so we did have, um, a savings of just over a million dollars. The F Y twenty-one budget has a beginning fund balance of twenty-three point four million dollars, revenues of seventy-nine point eight million dollars, expenditures of eighty-three point seven million dollars with an ending fund balance of nineteen point five million dollars, and this will maintain a healthy fund balance. The proposed mileage rate is sixteen and a half miles for this budget, and the current mileage rate is sixteen and a half miles. Future considerations are student growth, our local tax digest. The tax digest has experienced a steady growth over the last few years. State funding, will austerity continue in F Y twenty-two? Uh, employer T R, T R S rates, we hope they will stabilize. We've seen some significant increases in the past, but this year we did, uh, you know, a decrease. And the employer health insurance rates, they have been stable, you know, for now. So the recommendation is for the superintendent to recommend approval tonight for the F Y twenty-one tentative budget, and that concludes my presentation unless there are questions.
Are there any questions?
Um, just a, just a comment. Sarah Ann, you've done a really good job with a really difficult situation. Four and a half million dollar budget reduction is, uh, is pretty substantial, uh, in anybody's, uh, in anybody's ballgame, and, uh, to be able to put a budget together that absorbs that four and a half million dollar reduction, uh, but still meet the growth requirements of a growing school, and you mentioned several of those, including eighteen new positions that we need because of student growth and, uh, issues with special education teachers and counselors and all the things that we've talked about over the last two or three months. I think it represents a really, um, I'm searching for the word. It, it represents a, a cautious way to deal with the growth of a system, but at the same time recognize a significant loss, uh, in revenue that, uh, uh, that, that we otherwise would be counting on. You, you mentioned the fact that, that, uh, we've, we've governed, you know, conservatively, managed our, our funding, uh, well, uh, built, uh, reserves that are going to allow us to be able to absorb this, uh, in a way that doesn't totally disrupt, um, uh, our school operations, uh, is a testament to some, to some really good planning that, that, that you and Jason have, have, uh, maintained over the last couple of years. I appreciate your words of caution because I think those are, are well-founded. We don't know what next year will look like. This is a one-year budget. Uh, we don't know what fiscal year twenty-two is going to look like. Uh, our dig, our digest is obviously hopefully going to remain strong for this budget, but, uh, if we look back at previous, uh, fiscal downturns, we know what can potentially happen to, to local funding, uh, in, in out years. We'll probably know, we'll have a good idea in January, uh, what the state thinks the fiscal year twenty-two budget will look like. So, uh, I see this as a, as a, as a good way to begin this fiscal year, uh, manage the requirements that we've got, maintain a strong financial position without creating any more burdens, uh, that are already being, uh, dealt with among our, among all the employees across the school system. So, um, like, my, my point is, I think you've done a really good job with a really difficult situation, uh, and, uh, I assume and, and I'm sure that you'll keep your eye focused out six months ahead of us, not six months behind us, uh, be able to tell us in six months how things, uh, might, might begin to look for the rest of this fiscal year, uh, next year as well.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Thank you, Sarah Ann. Appreciate you presenting tonight, and thank you for being a rock in the financial picture.
Thank you.
Okay. That moves us on to action items, which is the tentative budgets. Dr. Branch, you have a recommendation?
Yes, sir. I appreciate, uh, Sarah Ann and the staff's efforts as well, and the board's, uh, tremendous involvement in, uh, getting to this point. It's certainly a team effort, uh, to address the needs of our students, and I just commend the board for always keeping that, uh, centrally focused in terms of our board, uh, and budget preparation. So, uh, without further ado, I'd recommend the board approve the tentative budget for F Y twenty-twenty-one as presented.
Hey, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation and need a motion to approve.
So I moved to approve the tentative budget as presented.
Okay, Mr. Bagley made the motion, and we got a second. As they said in the song, anybody.
Second.
Second, Mr. Burgess, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands. Pass is five zero. Dr. Branch. Uh, we do have a need for executive session this evening, so we need a motion to go into executive session.
Before we go into executive session, I'd just like to say that tonight's meeting had a tremendous amount of information, and it took a monumental effort on the part of all the staff, and I'd like to thank them for that. That being, that being said, I'd like to make a motion that the board adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on an affidavit that will be attached to the minutes.
Ms. Argo has made that motion. Do we have a second? Second, Ms. Parrish. All in favor, please raise your hands. Pass is five zero. We're adjourned to executive session. Thank you.
Board meeting, please mute your cameras and microphones, and I will let you know when the live stream has ended.